And we'll welcome with our prayer. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We come for the season that we're about to enter into. We ask that you give us wisdom to look over this meeting and do what is best for the citizens of Jasper. As soon as we ask you, Jesus' name.
Amen.
I would commend to all of you, council members, the information from the SRMPA, the departmental reports. And if you have just one public comment to me?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. I think I know people.
Gentlemen of the council and ladies, if you could see this. I come to you. Being born in Jasper, being raised down here on Water Street, getting up in the summertime and going across the street over here to the creek and playing in the creek, thinking I was Huckle Huckleberry Finn going down the river and seeing the creek and being transformed to what he is now. I'm here to thank you from all the hard work that was done for the parks and the Christmas time. It has really transformed the city of Jasper at a Christmas time where people come miles away to frame their family, to see this man and participate, which included me. Many of you know my mother, ninety-two years old. She's in a wheelchair, bad knees, bad ankles, still as sharp as it can. But with the city's aid and their help, they drove the handicapped for him, trained to her house, loading her up. With my wife and I, we all went to town. She was able to see it. And I just want to say thank you. It was, I know there's a lot of hard work that goes into it, and I want to appreciate Denise, Robbie, and all of those who participate, starting to make that beginning in October, bringing out all the lights, setting them up, getting our city ready for this wonderful event. She's ninety-two, my mother. I hope I can do for next year. The handicapped ramp drivers drove from the park to her house, picked her up, took this car back down the park, and then brought it back home. I wanted to thank them. And I just want to say thank you. A lady from my family.
Thank you, my dear. I was talking with Denise earlier today, and she gave me a figure, was it like five thousand, three hundred and something?
Five thousand, four hundred and...
Seventy-six. And we had one complete cancellation, one Friday night that was completely canceled, and two of the Friday nights, it was, the weather was misty rainy, it wasn't enough to completely cancel it, but it did put a damper, so that's quite a bit. That Saturday night was nine hundred and...
Forty-two.
So that's quite a few people, and those little twelve to, anywhere from nine to twelve cars or...
What was the total number again?
The total was five thousand, three hundred and seventy...
Five thousand, four hundred and...
Seventy-six. Fifty-four, seventy-six, I think.
Wow.
Before we go to the first action item, I'd be remiss if I didn't say Gerald, good to have you back. I see you up and running again. Doing well.
Thank you.
All right, we have first action item one, consider approval. We have two sets of minutes. The regular call, city council meeting on November nineteenth, and then the special call meeting on November twenty-ninth.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion in second for the approval of the two sets of minutes. Any discussion? Not all in favor, signified by the usual sign of voting. Motion carries unanimously. Also, far just for the purpose of the record, I think it's evident, Ms. Johnson contacted Ms. Kelly right before, saw the meeting, said that she has children, grandchildren that came in from Michigan. Surprised her early, so she was not going to be here tonight. Number two, consider sinking engineering and administration firms at the GLO funds from Hurricane Harvey.
Mayor and Council, this is the same one that we did last month, but the wording was wrong on the motion, so we're just bringing it back to you again for additional approval. It just says towards for the GLO slash CDBG funds for Hurricane Harvey. This is the one that we have been allocated through debt comp for a hundred and seventy-four thousand for infrastructure and a million for buyout or acquisition. So after we go through the procedure like we did before for the two million dollars for the drainage and stuff, we'll go through and be able to identify what projects that we can. We cannot mix them, we can't reallocate the money versus one to the other, and once we buy a piece of property that's for a buyout, it's being remained in the same shape it is, like for the creek or green or something like that. So this is just to get your approval to go forward with this.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion in second for the approval of the engineering firms for Hurricane Harvey. Any questions? Not all in favor, signified by the usual sign of voting. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Number three, we have a note here that that item is going to be withdrawn from the meeting tonight and moved to the January of two thousand nineteen. Number four, consider ordinance twelve dash seventeen dash eighteen building permit fees.
Mr. Frank, are building official?
Mayor and Council, we're just updating the ordinance. It hasn't been updated since two thousand and seven, which is some eleven years. There's not many changes. There will be, will be just a couple of them that will increase in fees, which is the basic building permit fee from fifteen dollars to twenty-five, and then on the subcontractors, the basic fee would go from fifteen to twenty. We did add a permit for a commercial tent that is about twenty by twenty or four hundred square foot or more in size. Generally, they should have fire retardant material, so when you get large tents like that, we kind of need to watch the material or fire retardant. Other than that, it's just an update. We are deleting the plumbing section as it is written now. It's the old school stuff, that charge like by the faucet and by the sinks and by the garbage disposal, and that would just relocate it over into the basic fees of the value of the labor and materials.
Right, how much did these go up from our previous fees?
How much what?
How much, how much increase here did we have from our previous fees?
From our previous fees, just the basics, just mentioned from the fifteen to the twenty-five, and then fifteen to twenty on subcontractors. The other fees, I don't know right here. Some actually, if we were to have one come in, say a million dollars, it would actually go down from the calculation that we have. It would go up into the hundreds of thousands. Instead of adding five dollars per thousand, we would drop that to like two, two dollars per thousand as stated here.
So it's an initial fifteen to twenty or fifteen to twenty-five?
Right, just the standard building permit fee if you come in now, instead of the fifteen minimum, it would be twenty-five.
Why, why the increase?
As I said, it hasn't been done since two thousand and seven, and we're way lower than most other cities. Most other cities start at around thirty bucks. I wasn't going for the gold, I was just trying to bring this up a little bit, you know, you got administrative fees, you know, time, and this includes the inspections too. Inspections are in this, we won't charge extra for any inspection.
Do you have questions?
So you couldn't, you couldn't quantify this in terms of a percentage raise or percentage increase, like it's across the board, we're looking at a ten percent or a fifty percent?
No, sir, the actual fees I have now are very vague, and some of them are even pencil written on there from my predecessors, so I don't, and as I looked in the old ordinance, I did not find the today. So I'm not sure where the today is, but this will make it official.
And this is not out of line compared to other communities our size?
No, sir, this is actually less. Make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion in second for the approval of the ordinance twelve dash seventeen dash eighteen. Any other questions? Not all in favor, signified by the usual sign of voting. Motion carries, it's unanimous. Number five, the sewer services, Harley Ninety-Six, that was tabled at the last meeting. If you had asked Greg to see if he could give us some information, he's done it.
We went back to take the businesses and residences there, as you can see on the west side, there's seven residents that can hook up to the sewer if you put it in there and set in a commercial, which comes from, that's on just the west side of Ninety-Six. It's a top line which comes to four hundred and thirty-nine dollars a month. Part of the utilities, a little over five thousand per year. That's a hundred and eighty-year payback on expenses in the sewer project. If you do all of it, the east side, County Road two sixty-four and High Truitt, on the one point four million dollars to do this project, it's a sixty-five year and eight month payback on it.
I remember what you said from the last meeting. If such a line existed or was put in, it would be mandatory for all residents in the city to hook up to it.
There was so many feet to it, yes.
So any septic system that they have paid for would be moot at that point.
That's right.
And it's mandatory for them to go from their house to the line, pay for that expense.
That's right. And that's even some of those, like the John Deere place and a few of those places might not still be able to get on because their septic's are behind them, and it's all downhill. So there's some of those that still, I'm not sure we'd even be able to get on right now without putting a pump or some sort in.
City expense.
I know Mr. Dean is adamantly opposed to being forced to...
No, sir, at the customer's expense.
Because it's put their house in the nice old private property.
He also didn't want his parking lot dug up. He was pretty testy about the prospect of maybe being forced on to...
You know, every sewer line in Jasper pretty much was put in by developers as they do a neighborhood or area, that's how they get to it in. You know, they come in, same thing like the Mack place built on Ninety-Six South here last year, year before last, they paid for the sewer line and they extended it out. That's how...
This line, this line, it was in at the restaurant?
No, it was actually good a little further up to that log cabin right there north of the restaurant.
Okay.
That way, we was trying to pick up the option Settlein, what's the name of it, Coastal, before we could pick up that side if we needed to, and also on that side. So trying to get as many as good to lower the price for the payback, I guess.
And this will not include...
The total project at the bottom, yes it does. It's everything, a one point four million dollars to put the complete system in there. But that would be with all thirty-one residents getting on, that's the minimum fee for everybody for a month as I put it on here.
So we're talking about digging to one side, the west side, correct?
That's what originally council had looked at, but I wanted to give you all west side, east side, and everybody else really could possibly get on. The big expenses, one of the bigger expenses I've recently started to session in, that's still, it's all part of this, I can't, I'm all going to have this. I think too, a major part of this is something, it's just a measure of fundamental fairness. We've had other requests for this very thing, and they have been required to pay for their own equipment and labor and so on, so. And I know most recently, the Performance Truck sent us out of town across from Marvin's house. Excuse me. Squeaking.
Just get choked up and talk?
Yeah, I know, it doesn't, but you know, they, they requested this service and we made them pay for it. So I mean, if we were, how, how could we justify dropping this kind of money for, you know, one business request and denying others?
Any other questions?
I mean, I said, I mean, you say previously you denied other customers and previous requests?
Yeah. Yeah, Performance Truck, I believe it was about twenty-eight thousand dollars they paid for their water service.
So I guess my question would be, why didn't? When they asked.
I think it's been a policy, has it not?
Correct. You know, for somebody coming in and building outside or building somewhere like that where there's no sewer, then it's not fair to rest of your customers to have to dig up the expense because somebody didn't do their due diligence when it bothered these property.
That's my big concern, this, this business acquisition, this is probably less than a year old, and in my opinion, if due diligence had been done, they would have known the size of their septic system. All right, I'll call for a motion, one more ago.
I'll make a motion to approve.
One second. The whole motion approved.
I'll make a motion to approve just the west side, what we had very briefly talked about, not including, not including High Truitt, it's west end, yes, right?
Motion down, just one second. All right, item number six, consider interlocal contract, city of Jasper, JISD.
This is a interlocal agreement we've been doing for eight years now. This is where we use it. The school provides buses and drivers. It's not different, Christmas and the park, different things we do. This just covers the school and the city both, as agreement, cover insurance and everything on that, anything happens, is what this is.
It's a one-year contract, Christmas and the Fourth of July, at a concert event by the city.
Our, because you have the top mergers that many buses, they sell off one of their also, so we have to, if there's a school next month or anything.
And the school requested an interlocal contract, for insurance purposes.
Second. I have a motion in second for the approval of the interlocal contract, JISD. Any questions? If not, all in favor, signified by the usual sign of voting. Motion carries unanimously. Number seven, consider approving bids received for the unleaded gas and diesel fuel.
This is our annual, annual bid for fuel and gasoline. We put it out for bid and came back on November the twenty-sixth, and it was ordered to Dover Exxon. They have already moved in, ready to service us. They have always done an excellent job for us, and we would just like to ask for your approval of this in place.
And was this, am I reading this correctly, there was only one bid received? And is this, in your opinion, in line with prior contract?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion in second for the approval of the bid from Bill O'Over Company Inc. Any questions? Not all in favor, seven to five by the usual sign of voting. Motion carries unanimously. Consider Care Plus ambulance service transition.
Councilman Mayor and Councilman Mayor, Allegiance Mobile Health has came into town and brought out the operations part of Care Plus, and we're, this is going to provide more availabilities and services for this operations part of this business, and we're asking to draw approval or if we need to take other action. We're still, we'll have two ambulances services in town, that's what we're set up for, to let this go forward.
There, I don't find anything in my packet for us to really, to act on. What is it that we're being asked to do?
I see Care Plus and Acadian is the only two ambulance services in town. Care Plus has sold out to Allegiance, and we wanted to get the council's approval to let them go forth with the application process to operate, be able to operate in the city.
Oh, I know. It was a buyout, basically.
Does that conflict with the contract we have with Acadian?
No, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion in second for the approval of the potential buyout. Any further discussion of questions? Not all in favor, signified by the usual sign of voting. Motion carries unanimously. Number nine, consider funding options for a new police canine and updating the vehicle safety system. This isn't a guide dog for you, is it, Gerald?
Maybe in the future. I've had several fellows put me in a wheelchair. Okay, as y'all know, or may not know, our canine of ten years passed away or had to be put out during having hip dysplasia, got to where he couldn't get up. Anyway, and it's pretty common with these highly trained dogs and such, things like that to happen. I mean, being in service ten years is just excellent. That being said, a new multi-purpose dog, dual purpose, what they call it, is expensive. They, when we bought Buddy back in oh eight, he was around twelve thousand, and then the training to get him certified with a handler was another five to six. Well, we have the opportunity to not only get a dual-purpose dog and also get a narcotic dog, or either or, cheaper than buying just the dual purpose straight out. A dual-purpose dog is twenty thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Now, that's tracking, that's narcotics, building searches, fell and take down, the whole ball of whacks. That's what we had with Buddy, that's what we need, because you, when you get in one of them situations, there ain't nothing sweeter than a dog to take that first entry. Officer Skoggan is willing to use his GI bill to purchase the dog. He has fourteen thousand dollars in seven seventy-five on his GI bill. He wants to be a canine in for the city. Jimmy Neal obviously is wanting to get out of canine since he lost Buddy. Jared is willing to donate the dog to the city, his GI bill will not cover the entire cost of this training and dog. He's up like five thousand and then thirty-five short. So we're asking for the city to pick that up, to get us the dual-purpose dog. In addition, Officer Smith, he got a canine that's narcotic-trained for ninety-five hundred dollars a year ago. He was going to become a canine and all that, well, he's been so tied up doing narcotic work that he can't do the canine, so he's, he's willing to sell that dog to us for three thousand. And that dog is, is narcotic, so he'd be the one that you'd take to the schools and things like that. I mean, the dual-purpose can do that too, but they're a little more aggressive normally. The dog has, has all the training and everything it needs. He's asking three thousand dollars for the dog, so we get it for a third of the price. Then we still have to send a handler and get him certified with the dog, which is another two to three thousand dollars. All right? On top of that, our canine unit, and that would also give us a dog on both ends there. Our patrol works, they have a day and night shift, that works one side of the week and a day and night shift works the other side, they split, and that'd give us a dog on both sides.
What do you read about that?
All right, their normal schedule is they work five on, two off, two on, five off. Whenever there's, there's a night and a day crew that works five on, two off, and the other side is the night and day crew that works two on, five off. And then every, every once in a while, they swap, so they don't get set on days or whatever. But they would give us a dog on both sides, they have a dog available twenty-four seven, but there'd always be one on the door. And this is Officer Skoggan. The canine vehicle, these dogs are so expensive that they make what they call a door popper, if you don't know what that is. The handler, when he's out on track, and he gets in a bind, tie, whatever, he has a button on his belt he can hit, and it'll open the back door and let the dog out to come to it. And that's, that's the door popper. It's a fancy gable, basically, that's where it works. Then the other is a cool alert to where it, it keeps check on the temperature in the car, so that you don't lose your dog, heatstroke, and it'll set off like the horn and the lights and all this kind of stuff. If it gets above a certain temperature, so you know you need to go check the dog and get him out or whatever. And that's the, that's the two things for the canine unit that we're needing, and it's, it was twenty-six fifty-six to upgrade that. My recommendation would be to purchase both dogs and upgraded equipment. If we're still coming out cheaper than just straight out having to buy a dual-purpose dog, we only need fourteen thousand, maybe more dollars to have both these dogs working. And that's why I'm here to present it to y'all and get y'all's thoughts or wishes or listens or whatever.
I'll make a motion in second. I have a motion in second for the purchase of both dogs and the equipment stated. Any other questions?
How old are the dogs?
Xena is four, and normally the dog, the other dog hadn't been purchased, but he'll be three to four.
What breed?
That'd be the Belgian Malinois.
Gerald, do you have any idea? I know when there's a drug arrest made, there can be a forfeiture of the house, of the house, of the vehicle, plus any money. Do you, can you give us a guesstimate as to how much Jasper receives in forfeitures, money and/or vehicles in a given period?
I can tell you how much receives, I can't tell you how much is awarded. I'm hoping that's a change coming through, that on the, that on the do. Right now, we have... right now, we have pending thirty-seven thousand. Uh, and that's not, we're still waiting on the, the money stash house that they get, the DEA, that Eric Dog alerted on. Uh, and it was a hundred and some thousand, and we'll get a certain, like thirty-five percent of it. But that's, that's taking time. But we got thirty-seven thousand pending right now in airport.
Is that a fairly average amount?
Uh, well, that's not counting cars. Uh, that's just, that's just cash. Uh, we, we'll usually do four or five cars. The problem there again being is we can't get the upper judicial system to get the paperwork approved to where it needs to be to give it water because it becomes a civil issue if you know that. Uh, and we've got an excuse, 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 but there again, I'm hoping that change is coming in.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor, signified by the usual sign of voting. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Number ten, consider approval to meet with the Verdet Company, exact veredage is, at their earliest mutual convenience, to discuss and contract for sculpted work involving economic impact study, site selection, appraisal of land, purchase of land, and any other aspects of design, building considerations being necessary for the purpose of constructing a sports complex in city of Jasper.
This was a clarification that, uh, and, and obviously, Ms. Johnson is not here to vote on it tonight. I don't know if we have a process whereby we do a proxy, uh, but I don't have that tonight, but, um, just to clarify, an action item that we had on our November agenda item, which we did approve. And, um, so if we need to table this, then I would, the motion, then we table it.
What is the, what was the clarification? It was my understanding that it passed, but that, uh, Mr. Hopkins and Jedco were gonna attempt to get us feasibility because of the, uh, the la, at the meeting that we considered employing that company, it was at no expense. And so, what is the clarification aspect of this?
Mayor, I believe that, uh, Mr. Hopkins offered those services.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but it has been our intent from get, to have the Verdet Company perform those services. Uh, it was also brought to my attention that Jedco was gonna have to hire another company similar to the Verdet Company to do the same job. And so, it's kind of, I think, kind of pointless to do that. And that, uh, you know, thus the clarification on this agenda item.
Mr. Hopkins is here was, well, y'all, I didn't understand that.
When I volunteered our agency to do the economic impact study, there hadn't been a firm hired yet or even considered at that point. It was pretty early on. And we're still, we have got a consultant in Austin that's sitting waiting for us to give the okay to do it. There is an expense we're gonna have to incur, but, I mean, a, a study needs to be done by somebody to show the council and the city that the economic impact of a facility like this is gonna have on Jasper. And we just simply volunteered our agency to take the lead on that since that's what we do. Uh, the expense, we have found out, it is gonna cost two thousand dollars to do an independent study, uh, separate and apart from, but there's gonna be, there's gonna be some, we've got a spreadsheet that there's quite a bit of criteria that's asked for on that in order to do an adequate study. You've gotta know the number of acres. You've gotta know the number of fields. You've got to even know the number of tournaments you anticipate having, the number of people it's gonna draw. I mean, you basically give the consultant the numbers and they put them in a, a system and spit out a result, basically. But there's quite a bit of legwork that we're gonna have to do, and we're willing to do that. It's just that I volunteered to do that prior to any engagement with the company. So, in the event, y'all wanted that number prior to engagement. But there's a lot of data that's got to go in in order to perform an adequate study. We're still willing to do it, but if you've got a firm that can, that's strictly up to the council. We're still here if he needs. And he is sitting waiting for us to complete the spreadsheet and send it back.
And that, uh, person, you said, would be an expense of about two thousand dollars if they had all the information?
Yes, sir. That's the fee he's asked us to. If we enter into an engagement with him, that's the cost it would be to do this study.
Part of that information, though, Mayor, is information that would be provided by a firm that has had the expertise in doing these things, and they would be, you know, more knowledgeable about what a community our size, uh, would need and, and would benefit us most.
Isn't that what this is, action item was for?
Yeah. Yeah.
Mayor, may I say something? Whether we table this, vote on it, or whatever, kind of like Mr. Ratcliffe said there a moment ago, there's a lot of work went into the park. There's gonna be a lot of work go into this, uh, sports complex. We are at a point that we are just Jasper on the south end of the lake. We have no calling code. We have no reason for somebody to come to our city. We need to do something that will encourage our towners to come. And it, it, in my opinion, that if we build this sports complex and families come and spend the weekends, there's a very strong possibility that we may have some residence, homes built, and new restaurants or whatever. It can be done. Uh, as we all know, there, there's not a thing in this world that costs money. I'm kind of to the point I don't wanna spend too much, but, you know, I want, I want to make Jasper a place that people would like to come, whether it's to play balls, spend the weekend, or just to stop by, or build a resident here. And that's what I'm looking for.
And this is all the action item, right?
Your motion, what, you, you made some statement before you started.
Well, if it's, uh, you know, I don't wanna put it out for vote and lose the vote. One of my council members that I've been supporting, if you turn, if you turn behind the action item, you'll see the note that we submitted.
Well, I see the notation, but it's, it's my information that Ms. Johnson did not approve her name being put on this.
So you want to table it?
So it's what have you, it's your motion, if you wanna present it or if you wanna table it?
I think we need to table it. So, so I'm just, we table it because.
You're tabling because somebody's there that.
As by. I'll table something because of the thirty-four minute.
Mayor, could I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
It's very obvious that the council split on this, and maybe some people in the community split on this also, which is a way of life. What would be the process that we would have to do, and is it practical, being that we have an election year coming up, putting this on the ballot, that citizens of this city to see if they will approve or disapprove of sports complex in the city of Jasper in relation to Jasper?
Well, you have to have all the money, you know, everything is gonna be done, where, property.
And I think the ad only could be done in that fashion as a referendum, nothing by the own city.
All right.
I don't know the answer to that question. Most lawyers have the answer to all questions.
That's, that's, that's out.
Well, I, I would ask that somebody explore that possibility.
Or you open it up to a public forum, kind of, situation, special council meeting. But be, before you can even get the match, you've got to have the study, study.
By somebody, I mean.
Still gotta spend some money, of course.
The case is, we could be needing to go on this item, go on the table, because if your third vote is not, you have enough people to be informed, so we have enough people to go on the item.
Well.
We're in session. We have enough people to make a decision. If there's a tie, then we have to make, make a decision.
It's his motion. If he wants to withdraw the motion, just like, uh, action item three about the name, that can be done. So if he is withdrawing to be, that's fine. I understand the point. The statement is correct, that we're gonna have to get a dollar, uh, some similar to the dollar figure. And this was, the firm, the Verdet firm was who we selected, that was because it was gonna be at no expense. Uh, I think that Ms. Kelly could get with Verdet Company and find out, give us a ballpark figure, what it's gonna cost. Is it gonna cost two thousand dollars, like Mr. Hopkins said it would get? Of course, that involves getting the information. Or is it gonna cost you twenty thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars? Can get some of the ballpark.
That's what would come from the scope of work meeting. What you're, what you're talking about doing would, would come from the scope of work we.
But this says, your motion says, contract and contract for scope of work. Certainly, they could tell us, if they've got the experience, as I think they do, to tell us, you're probably looking at X amount of dollars. If they can't do that, that'd be like someone coming in to hire me as an attorney. If I can't say it's gonna cost X amount of dollars, they ought to get up and walk out. So, it's your motion. Do you want it presented tonight or you want it withdrawn?
I will withdraw it.
And I will ask Ms. Kelly to attempt to get some sort of ballpark figure, understanding it's gonna be a ballpark figure from the Verdet Company is what it's gonna, gonna take. And if it's something that can be presented, I honestly don't know, is it can, if the city residents get involved, do they just say yes or no to give we on the council an idea as to whether they would like to, us to go forward or not? All right. Uh, item number ten is withdrawn, and item number eleven, and then Mr. Germaine. So I will consider us adjourned at six forty-two. Uh, thank everyone for being here tonight, and I hope everybody have a Merry Christmas.